Okay, good morning. I'm going to call to order this Perrysburg Board of Education Work Session on October 4th, 2022. We'll start with the roll call, please.
Ms. Larimer.
Here.
Mrs. Eubank.
Here.
Dr. Refort.
Here.
Mr. Pullman.
Mr. Bennington.
Here. Mr. Pullman had let me know that he is out of town on personal business today, so. Next item, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My Perrysburg Schools welcomes you to the Commodore Building and we thank you for attending this morning's Board of Education meeting. We care about the safety of our students, staff, families, and guests. Please note that there are exits on both sides of the east and west sides of the cafeteria. In case of an emergency, an AED is located just outside the cafeteria doors. You are located at 140 East Indiana Avenue. Thank you for joining us and supporting Perrysburg Schools. So can I have a motion to adopt the proposed agenda?
So moved.
Ms. Larimer.
Second.
Dr. Refort, a little bit quicker. And with that, roll call, please.
Ms. Larimer.
Yes.
Dr. Refort.
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank.
Yes.
Mr. Bennington.
Yes.
All right. Mr. Hustler, Superintendent's report, special guest.
Yes, thank you. Good morning. So if we recall, going back to the Board Retreat, which took place earlier this year, I think at the end of January, early February, one of the things that was of interest to the Board at that time was taking a look at the strategic plan that we had established a few years earlier and beginning to have conversations about updating that. And to that end, we engaged Cheryl Ryan from the Ohio School Board Association. Cheryl is kind of an expert in this area in leading school districts through the strategic planning process. So we began to have some conversations about getting that process underway here at Perrysburg. So with us this morning is Cheryl Ryan from OSBA. And she will begin to kind of walk us through what that, you know, we're kind of in the starting blocks and what the race is going to look like ahead of us. So with that, I'll turn it over to Cheryl, and welcome. Thanks for making the trek north from Columbus.
Welcome back.
Yeah, it's always good to be in Perrysburg.
Yay.
I think this might be the first time I've ever been in this building.
Yeah.
I've been in lots of your country.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good, how are you?
All right, so yeah, great to be with you. I don't often have 7:00 AM meetings. It's nice. It's a great way to get my day started. And if you don't mind, I'll stand. So the purpose of today's meeting is really, there's two key purposes. One is to talk to you and answer any questions you have about the structure of what we refer to as the core team. So when we do strategic planning with the district, and OSBA helped you in facilitating the plan that you have so well implemented over the past several years. So whether we are reinvesting in some of the content from your old strategic plan or totally rebuilding, in our model, we do that with what we refer to as the core team. And that is the group of people that consists of some or all of you, your administrators, staff members, community members, parents, whomever. And so one of the things that is important for us to talk about is how you want to form that group. Whether you want to invite individuals, whether you want to put out a general call and ask people to let you know if they'd like to be interested, et cetera. So that's the key topic. The other second key topic we need to do is for me to understand what the calendar looks like for these meetings. So when we do strategic planning, we are here in person. We use two facilitators from OSBA. So Terry Morgan, my deputy director, will be working with me on this project. And so the two of us will come. So I've got my calendar here. And one of my key purposes is talking with the five of you about how you want to do these meetings. So we refer to this as the planning meeting, so I've got that date there on the top sheet that you can see. And then I have the four core team meeting dates. Some plans go to a fifth, some plans finish in three. It all depends on the group, the size of the group, the pace at which the group moves, how much of your old plan your group decides is good to go, whether we sort of... There are some times we work with a district that has a strategic plan and they say, "We don't care about keeping our old vision and mission. This is a new day, a new group, and we want to start fresh." And there are other times a district says, "Well, you know, I'm not sure about our mission or our vision, but we kind of like this." Or, "We don't want you to touch our core values. We think those are strong. We just kind of want to move forward with this and that." So those all affect how long the process kind of takes. So I guess my first question to you, and it would get us started, is when were you thinking that you wanted to get started with a diverse community group? And what I would refer to as core team meeting number one?
Because one of my thoughts on that was probably sometime before the end of the year to kick off maybe that first core team meeting. You know, I say that without recalling when we did this last time. We certainly went down the route of selecting community members. Kind of, it was a rather large group, so I don't recall, and I was new on the board at that time, how long that that would take to identify that. Is there time to do that in the 2022 year?
I think so. We have, generally speaking, you know, if we were to put something out, you know, if the Board said, "We want to open the doors and have a all-call and kind of go through those," you know, to post it, to give people time to respond, and then for the Board to go through those responses. I think by, you know, mid-November, we could do that and possibly get, you know, get things lined up for that. So, yep, I think it's doable.
So, and I start with that, I probably should have started too, with kind of an idea of when do we think we would want this work kind of wrapped up? And my thought on that is mid-next year. Kind of that, again, June timeframe, if I'm thinking, you know, potentially a core team meeting a month. How often do these core team meetings, core teams meet?
I would say once a month is probably somewhat typical. Between each core team meeting, there is homework on OSBA's end, on our end, in terms of turning around what happened in the last meeting, thinking through, providing all of your core team members notes and stuff to ruminate on between then and the next meeting. And that takes time. The other thing that I would mention is that your strategic plan does include, if you want to take advantage of it, an opportunity for a community survey to feed the data that contributes to the process. Most districts want to do that survey at the front end of the strategic plan, but you can do it at any point. I did a strategic plan a couple of years ago where we kind of got down the road and got vision, mission, and core values done. And then the Board said, "Now let's put out a survey and let that feed the process in terms of goals and strategies." Sometimes districts call after the strategic plan is done and say, "Now that we're kind of rolling along, we'd like to get a survey to see whether the community thinks we're on the right track." And then a lot of times it happens at the beginning. So getting a survey drafted and out to your community online digitally, back to us and analyzed, that takes a bit of time, too. So if you want to do your survey at the beginning of the process to provide data to feed the process, I would say then your first core team meeting is probably going to be pushed a little bit later. But Eric, to your point about finishing in April or May, that's incredibly feasible.
Question, like what would be an example of a question that the survey would go out? Like, I'm trying to get a general idea.
Sure. So the questions that we ask, first of all, we try and ask, the very first question on the survey, ask people how they identify with Perrysburg Schools, parent of a current student, et cetera. But typical questions are, and every district is different, but there's almost always a question about perception of what Perrysburg Schools is doing really well and a list of things to choose from. A question about things that, in your perception, Perrysburg Schools could do better. If it's concerning strategic planning, there might be a question of programs or curriculum or opportunities for students that Perrysburg could offer or in their minds should offer. So questions about that, that sort of would just kind of gather general community feedback that would be used by the core team in the strategic planning process.
The reason I asked is we do do a survey, and I was wondering if it was similar. The questions sort of, I mean, we could curtail them, but...
Yeah, a lot of what you just said are questions that are on the survey that Rachel does. She's our communications director, so I would think before...
Correct.
If, I think some of the things you were asking or speaking about there were maybe a little bit more specific than what Rachel puts out on hers, so I think some coordination between you and she
Sure.
would be very beneficial to make it not a redundant survey and get us more to the point of what maybe we need to know for you.
How often does that survey happen, and when was the last one?
Once a year.
I think it was just spring. I think it was May. And then if I'm not mistaken, I remember a survey that we did where, I know it wasn't last year, I think it was the year before, where we asked what was important. Like, I remember elementaries and neighborhoods was one of the key answers.
I believe that was part of the Facilities Committee work, the Strategic Facilities.
Well, maybe that kind of, you know, we can look at those questions as well, so they're not redundant. I don't know. I just remember, I was just thinking of surveys where we've asked questions that pertain to maybe the answers we already...
And since we're already working on the facility stuff, that would obviously, we don't want to redo it.
That's what I was thinking, too.
So we'd be able to work with OSBA to provide that information, I'm assuming.
Yeah, absolutely. So we can either use data that you've already got, and obviously, that is always part of every strategic planning process, is to familiarize the core team with current data in the district. So happy, I mean, the survey includes, I mean, the strategic planning process includes a survey. Whether we do it now, at the end of the process, whether we do it in the spring, when your community appears to be used to having a survey, we can do that, or we don't have to do it at all. So that's great conversation for me to have with you.
And you know, think about the, we're in the facilities planning. Hopefully, in January, we're going to have a recommendations from the facilities groups. At the same time, all tied together, we're going to be talking about renewal levy, maybe a new operating levy, maybe a bond issue. All that is going to come together because timing-wise, if we're on the ballot, if, again, it's if. In November, you're doing your votes of resolution necessities and all that probably in June at the latest. So it's going to be, it's all going to have to come together about that same time.
Right, and that's all the tie-in from all the three community or three groups that we had and all of the community members that were in that.
And when is that going to be presented? Because that sort of would tie into, like, the information we're gathering from them, like Randy said. Like, when does that being presented to us?
Yeah, January is the original timeline, so.
Okay, so January.
Yeah, so I think, correct if I'm wrong, Tom, where the facilities group is working towards having a recommendation from their perspective to the Board in January.
Okay.
And then we have to work after that, the timing and how, and if that Board wants to proceed that way. And then we got all the funding pieces of all that. So it's going to be, there's going to be a lot of wheels turning, and it's all kind of synergistic, too, potentially, just how you tie it together.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of streams that will flow into this process. So when you think about the academic, we talked about the state report card at the last meeting. We know that there's other types of indicators that we focus on as well from the academic side of things. You also have the financial, you know, responsibilities that we have, and usually that's one of those streams that flow into this. Facilities is another one, operations, all those streams kind of come together. And you think of the strategic plan as a way to place that flag out there saying, you know, "This is where we want to be in the next three, five years." And then it's up to us to, the administrative team and the staff, to kind of gather the data to help set that course to get there. So all the things that we have in place, we'll begin to work with Cheryl and reveal those as we go along, saying, "Well, we have this data, here's what we do," and just see how those things overlap. So the idea is, you know, we have that destination from the last time where we want to be as a district. We're continuing to drive towards that destination. We're using data and getting real-time assessment and feedback on how to get there. What we need to do is say, "Is that the right destination?" And if it is the right destination, or if we change that destination, what is the route to get there and how do we get there? So it pulls in all of these things, and they're all complementary. And, you know, we do, you know, many things that maybe other districts don't do in terms of annual surveys and getting those kind of questions. We're already well into the facilities. So all those things are really going to help us propel this process further and more quicker, more quickly than perhaps if we were standing still. And in Perrysburg, we really don't like to stand still, so, yeah, so we'll pull all these things together, you know.
Well, your former strategic plan, or the current strategic plan, the one that is sort of in the sunset phases of its life, obviously provided you a terrific road. And the things that your superintendent, Randy, that you and, that you've just talked about, about facilities and finances and potential levies or bond issues, academic enrichment, all of those things came about because your district had a plan and had a focus and put that all into motion. And the purpose of this new plan is just to, in some ways, reassure yourselves that you are on the right track, as you said, and to breathe some new life into that, into that structure. So if a survey upfront is not an issue, then I think we could probably talk about having a first meeting before the end of the year. The, you know, logistically, it's not an issue for us at all, but you want to make sure that you have time to notify and gather a good group of core team and community members. I know that you've also been doing some focus groups already with your community. Certainly, community members, I'm guessing, are involved with your facilities work. So you don't want to overtax your community, but you do want people who are invested in the school district. So what are you thinking in terms of a first meeting, Eric? Were you thinking about pre-Thanksgiving, post-Thanksgiving?
Yeah, I was certainly thinking post-Thanksgiving, just in time to get that community group together. I start to think about, you know, the ability to pull a large group of people together in the busy holiday months of December, hearing the conversations about all the other pieces that we're working on that kind of need to come together and dovetail into this. We have a Board Retreat in, end of January, beginning of February. Part of my mind starts to think, you know, it's February, the correct time for that first core team meeting.
I was saying it's February for the Board Retreat, sorry.
February for the Board Retreat, so later on in February. Could that be kind of a topic of conversation? The strategic planning for our retreat, and then this Board feels ready and confident to go into the core team meetings.
I guess that's what, February 4th?
Yes, the retreat is February 4th, so.
Once you hit right around Thanksgiving, it's like December, that's just asking too much, I think, to get everybody on board and with the holidays and to actually be present with the information. So maybe to gather all the stuff that we have.
I turned it off because I was coughing. But, you know, to gather all of the information that we have, you know, from all of the different groups and just make sure we're having that focus of what we want, I think that that would probably work.
We have, if we've been gathering, I mean, it's what, the beginning of October, so that's October or November. So that's at least two and three-quarter months. That would be more than enough time to be able to get community list of people that want to do this, right? At that particular point, instead of maybe calling it a... Maybe it could be a pre-core team meeting one, just to get people together, very light, get everybody to know one another, to give them the idea of what this is. Maybe do the first part of this where we're talking about the orientation and clarification of roles. Really think we need to get... I'm one of those that gets irritated that everybody goes brain-dead after Halloween or Thanksgiving. You know, it's like, there's still workable days in here. We can get this done. So I really think it's a good idea to try and get at least some sort of generalized meeting done, get our team put together, have at least an intro meeting by the end of the year, before the end of the year, before the end of the school year, or school, this fiscal, not, no.
Calendar year.
Calendar year, that's the word I was looking for. And then, and then be able to really hit it hard come January. And then that gives us a lot of information for the retreat then, on the 4th. Because if we're looking at trying to get this pulled together solid by the end of April, when you've got testing and spring break and vacations and all of that coming right in there, I think we need to get at least the beginning. Sometimes it's hard to get started. And then at least it's in people's minds somewhere in there, and you don't have to, you don't find your team in the fall and then leave it live for weeks before we actually get into the meeting. I would be all for at least having a mini-core team meeting, one before the end of the year, calendar.
Yeah, and I could, oh, go, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was going to say, Eric, can you, was that what you were alluding to? I think I was following what you said, but then it sort of tailed off my... So were you saying start one in December?
I was actually saying start one in February, but I can get on board with a suggestion of a...
You started something and then I, okay.
Of a gathering in December for, once the team meets. I did want to clarify one thing. You know, I moved up the, or I pushed back the start. I'd also be willing, you know, I'm thinking the final report to delivery, so long as it's ready by the beginning of the next school year. So June, July timeframe would be acceptable for me.
Right, I agree.
So what if you did the work now to talk about recruiting your core team? What I've put in your packet are documents, too, that I can send to you electronically. But it includes a letter that could go out to electronically via email or however you want to send it, to potential members. Districts often ask, "Should we invite people to the table, or should we just open the doors and see who wants to come?" And I think it needs to be a combination of both of those. I think there needs to be some way for people you might not know about who could really offer a great contribution to find their way to you. As well as, you know, I'm sure the six of you and Mr. Pullman could, you know, say, "Who should be here?" And you could probably come up with a list of 30 or 40 people that you would want here as well. So, and sometimes that takes a while. It takes a while for you to get your team together. It's really important, one of the things that I think is most important is for whoever commits to the process to be here at all the meetings. And it's natural that you lose a few people along the way, kids get sick, business calls, those things happen. And you will have a smaller group at the fourth meeting than you had at the first meeting. And that's to be expected. But if you can give people the four dates when they commit to the process, that's really beneficial, too, for busy families who are planning out their winter and early spring. So if it's possible for us to talk about dates, also, Terry and I get really busy in the winter and spring, and I want to make sure that both of us are available. So recruiting your core team, maybe coming together for a, "This is what you've signed up for in early December," I think could work. And then getting rolling in the end of January or mid to late January with meetings. And I could see, I could see winding up with the core team, "When is your spring break? Is it mid-April, early to mid-April?"
First week of April.
First week of April. Maybe doing the last core team meeting, I guess, depending on how it falls, after spring break, and then having a document maybe for the May Board Meeting. Usually, we like to see Boards approve the vision, mission, and goals. And that becomes, the work of the Board is a recommendation from the superintendent to approve the vision, mission, and goals as suggested by the committee. And then you're off and running into the summer. Does that sound workable?
So long as it's workable with the Facility Committee work and the work we need to do on the levies and bond issues. Yeah, I can get on board, I can get on board with that.
Isn't, is it May our five-year forecast?
That's the update. We'll do, we do one in November and one in May.
Okay, so would that be a real heavy meeting then? A lot to expect of that meeting, because, I mean, to me, when we get a forecast, that's, unless there's something else going on at the time that's, you know, of current need, that seems to be the shining star of that meeting. Did you hear that, Randy? So should, should we shoot for June? We could always do a special meeting.
On the agenda.
Yep, we could do that, or do June, so that we're not going into graduation and all of that. Because this is important, and we're setting the groundwork for big deal. We've got two seats up that year, so it's important to make sure that we've put the time and effort into it and give ourselves the grace to do this well. So maybe May, to me, might be aggressive, maybe June or a special meeting might be better so that we're not stomping on Randy or graduation.
Sue, I appreciate you recognizing the five-year forecast. I think it's the first time in my career that a Board member thought about the May five-year forecast in October. But my thinking right now is, and I haven't talked with Tom, is that the bulk of the five-year forecast work is try to do that at the work session and not at the Board Meeting. And the reason is then, we're not constrained by everything else that we have to do at the Board Meetings.
Okay.
So that, I don't know if that helps or hinders there, but that's my thought at this point.
Okay. And then, Eric, did you, was your line of thought to wait until after the Board Retreat?
It was.
Okay.
It was.
Are you then thinking January instead, or wait until we have our Board Retreat? I'm just wondering, what at the Board Retreat do you think would be beneficial to wait?
What I'm more, what I'm, what I'm thinking about more is again, the work of the Facility Committee.
Yeah.
But we should hear that in January.
I agree.
Probably at the retreat, another, probably the bigger topic, the Board Retreat, is going to be talking about the levy. Not necessarily this work.
Okay.
I mean, we can touch on this work, but again, it's all synergistic.
And so the January meeting, I know it's not set in stone yet, but that would be at our, our meeting, we would hear the presentation by, okay, so that would be mid-January then?
Yeah, so we put a core team, our, a core team meeting between January and that retreat.
Yeah.
That last week of January.
I think that's just one week then, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
So if we did basically an initial meeting, getting to know the core team, talking about roles and responsibilities and what we're going to be doing in this process, the first part of December, that's what I'm hearing, correct me if I'm wrong, and then bring the core team together to begin the work end of January? After you've heard from your Facilities Commission?
Yes.
So then we could have our meetings end of January, end of February, end of March, end of April. end of April.
With an anticipated, seeing the final report, final discussion in the May board meeting. And if anything slips, that takes us into June, still plenty of time.
Yeah.
Or a special meeting, yeah.
Right, but if you're doing end of meeting, or meeting at the end of April, our work session is usually, you know, obviously we're going to rethink this in January, but it's usually the first week, if you hold with tradition, you know, so I don't know if you're going to have enough time between April and May unless we have a special meeting towards the end. I mean, if he's, I just feel like there might not be enough time between April and May to wrap that up. Like for, if we're meeting as a core team and then presenting information, how much time do you need between that last meeting and, and getting the plan together?
I think that if you, if you wind things up with your core team in April, the end of April, we get a brochure drafted which basically says, this is the vision, mission, core beliefs, and goals for Perrysburg Exempt Village Schools in our new strategic plan, and that is sort of what you shoot to approve at your board meeting. You could probably do that easily in June. And I think the goal of, of May or June and leaving yourself that flexibility is probably good for you to do.
And again, leaving it either through a work session, the regular meeting, or a special meeting.
Were you envisioning having these core team meetings in the evenings?
More than likely that works.
Yes, I'd say yes.
That works here, yeah.
Okay. Is it presumptuous of me to actually ask you to target some dates?
Right now? I'm probably gonna say, probably a little presumptuous.
If the, if the, if these meetings are going to be at the end of the month, are we looking at after our board meeting, which is the third Monday night? Or do we want to have these, these core meetings before our monthly main board meeting?
Well, a lot of this is going to depend on how big your group is. I don't know if you're envisioning 15 people or 45 people. That makes a difference. Usually a core team meeting is at least two hours long, and sometimes they go three. So tagging it on to a board meeting is difficult, right? Just because energy levels.
Oh, no, 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 I don't want to tag it on to a meeting, I'm wondering if these meetings, these core meetings are supposed to be done before our-
I don't, I don't think they should, they need to be linked at all.
They don't, so we could have it after that meeting, the fourth week of a month, and then it would be okay. All right.
The most important thing is, is you're determining which board members want to be involved. In some, in some strategic plans, one or two board members attends every core team meeting, because the core team is, basically, it's a, it's a committee of the board, it's a board committee. And in many strategic plans, all five board members want to be involved. If all five board members want to be involved, then of course your schedules and your ability to be here is affected. So my only, my only concern, and we will be here whenever we can be, is I want to make sure that Terry and I are available for you on the nights.
Yeah, so what I hear Cheryl saying is if we could lock into the dates now, one that would protect us from other, you know, groups that are planning and working with you.
If you can even tell me, I think we're going to do Wednesdays. You know, for, for the five of us, usually it's Thursdays are the best date. So if you can even sort of tell me that, I can look ahead and make sure that we don't get double booked for you.
Okay.
I'm gonna propose the last week of each, each of those months, and I'm gonna throw out either Tuesday or Wednesday.
I vote for Tuesday.
Okay, so just, we're looking at the end of January, the end of February, okay.
End of March and end of April.
March, end of April.
Correct.
Okay.
And you said, Laura, you voted for?
No, I, I, I said I like Tuesdays.
Tuesdays.
Because Wednesday night is church night for a lot of people, so I wouldn't want to choose that one. I don't know what sports schedules are for Tuesday, but it's just like-
There's something every night.
Yeah, there's something every night, but.
And I, I, you know, I expect I'd be involved in every-
Every session, so Tuesdays is going to work best for me.
Okay, oh, see, I picked well, there you go.
So look-
So I'm, I'm looking at maybe Tuesday, the 24th?
Of January.
Of January?
I'm catching up to you.
Yep.
Tuesday, oop, January.
So am I gonna assume, as a board, every one of us is gonna, I mean, I definitely want to be involved, so, I mean, is that, are we gonna assume all of us are going to be on this strategic plan?
That would be my preference.
Okay.
Everybody's welcome to.
Yes, definitely, I do, okay.
So what are we thinking, five o'clock?
Ooh, I think five o'clock is early.
Well, if it's gonna be two to three hours, if you do six, that's nine. Six to eight, five to eight, I mean, it's gonna, there's gonna be a commitment.
Yeah, I guess people could get off work if they need to. I mean, people usually work till five is what I'm saying, and then you gotta drive here.
Well, having the dates locked in, when we send out the information about joining, we'll say the meetings will begin at five o'clock, and people can make that judgment.
Or even five thirty, if that works.
We give them the dates and everything ahead of time, so.
Is five thirty too late, Tom, do you think?
Does that work for you though, Eric, with your work schedule?
Yeah, I can make five thirty work.
Five thirty.
Okay, so it's, how about five thirty on the last Tuesday of the month? Does that make it consistent, or, or the Tuesday after the board meeting? No, that wouldn't make sense, because then people get confused that it's the third Tuesday, not-
Or we just gotta go through the dates, right?
Looks like the 24th of January, 28th of February, 28th of March, the 25th of April, and then possibly May 23rd.
Oh, I missed February. Okay.
Did you say 25th of April?
Yes.
So the 24th of January, the 21st of February?
Twenty eighth is what Tom said, 28th.
That's the fourth, if we're sticking with the fourth, trying to-
Okay, fourth Tuesday of every month, okay.
Because we have our, well, actually, we probably would have our board meeting on the 21st because of the 20th being-
Of the President's Day, yeah.
President's Day. We usually have it on a Monday, and so then on Tuesday is, we usually defer on a holiday, but-
Yeah, because January and February, they move to Tuesday.
Yeah.
So then-
For some reason, you know, both, those February and March dates for me are really bad. Of course. The 21st is good, but you said that's your board meeting, is that right?
We'll probably have a board meeting on the 21st.
Typically would be, yes.
And the 21st of March is your board meeting as well?
No, no, March is normal.
Yeah, it'd be the 20th of March.
I almost would say, well.
Is there any way I can talk you into Thursday?
In, in which month?
Thursday's bad.
In February?
At all, I mean, if, if you want them to be the same dates for people, the last Thursday instead of the last Tuesday?
You know what, though? I do feel like sometimes with meetings, if you move it from not every Tuesday, some people can do a Thursday or what, you know what I mean? I don't know if we need to have it consistent where it's every Tuesday per se. I find that sometimes if you have it switched not on the same day in meetings I've been before, that that does-
Tuesday, the 24th works for me. Tuesday, the 24th of January works for Terry and for me, but February and March don't.
What about February 23rd?
February 23rd works.
It's a Thursday.
Okay, let's do that.
Okay.
March, the 30th or the 23rd? I heard you say the 28th does not work for you.
I would stick, I would say the week before, just because if people are packing, getting ready for spring break, that 30th might be a little-
Okay, so do the, 23rd of March?
The, and I will tell you, the, I'm sorry, I'm being difficult. The annual, the inaugural COSBA conference is in, begins on March 30th. So as you all know, OSBA is part of a new consortium of state school board associations called COSBA, and their national conference is March 30th to April 2nd. So the 20, would the 23rd of March work? There's five Thursdays.
Yeah, that's what you're just, yeah.
Yeah, March 23rd.
Okay.
And where are we at in April here, and then back to the Tuesday, the 25th in April?
So I've got January, February, March, April, so we've got January, February, March, April, those are the, those are four meetings. Are those the meetings that are going to go alongside your core team meeting number one, number two? Are we still doing an intro meeting in December so that essentially is giving us a fifth meeting?
That would be my question. If you want that, we can still do that. We can do that, this is what we're planning for you, these are who you are, this is what your role will be come the end of January when we really dig in. So we could still do that meeting, and I want to confirm, the fourth meeting that we just talked about would be the 27th of April, is that right, Eric? Is that what you said?
If we're sticking with the Thursday.
The 25th, back to Tuesday.
Back to Tuesday, okay.
Back to Tuesday of that month.
That works.
Okay.
And then, so when we think about a December kind of kickoff meeting, our board meeting's on the 19th of that week. I think we'd want to look at that, consider that during the week of the 12th.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. So either the 13th or the 15th?
Either of those work.
13th, we already have a pupil services board meeting, or committee meeting.
And that could maybe just be an hour, 60, 90 minutes?
Mm-hmm.
Kind of laying out the work.
From 4:30 to 6:00.
So why don't we plan on a, kind of an hour-long kickoff meeting on that evening on the, at six o'clock.
Okay.
Tuesday.
Six?
On what date?
Tuesday the 13th.
December 13th.
December, December 13th.
Okay.
I thought you said there was a pupil services committee?
It goes till 6:00, and it's here, so I can go right after that.
It's 4:30, well, she's been doing really well at keeping those to about an hour, so 4:30, 5:30, because there's a Perrysburg School Foundation meeting at 5:30, so, and that's usually held in here, but we can, we can move them. No offense, Jeff, so I think, I think that that, that would work just fine, we could do that.
Okay, so from 6:00 to 7:00, something like that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, well, that's progress. The other, the only other things I really have for you is, on the second page here, this is a process graphic that we'll present, I guess, at that December meeting, just to let your core team members know what, what they're signing up for.
Give them a chance to leave.
Give them a chance to cut and run, right. So the third page is a letter that is editable, and I will again send you, Tom, a digital version of this, but it outlines the, the dates, gives people the dates, and lets them get them on their calendar. There is a little bit of a job description for your core team members. And then on the very last page is just an opportunity for you all to think a little bit about making sure you have diversity on your team, right? So whether a person is employed by the district, a parent in the district, a retired person in the district, maybe a young family who doesn't have children yet in the district, but will in the next few years, that kind of thing, to make sure that you're cutting across your district in terms of your looking for potential core team members. And if you don't have any other questions, I'm not sure what else we need to talk about, but I, I definitely want to make sure I answer any questions that you might have as we move forward.
So can you review those dates, just so we have them all in order?
Sure. Beginning on, in December, I have December 13th at 6:00 to bring the team together and just answer any questions and get ready to roll. Then I have Tuesday, January 24th at 5:00 PM.
What, 5:00?
Uh, 5:30.
Oh, we said 5:30, thank you.
Yep.
Then we have February 24th, or excuse me, 3rd, February, Thursday, February 23rd, again, at 5:30 PM. We have March 23rd at 5:30 PM. And we have April 25th at 5:30 PM.
Thank you.
Great.
That work for everyone?
Yeah, thank you.
Great.
We will talk about timing, if, if board members have, you know, considerations for recruitment, we will talk about, Tom, we'll get together and talk about kind of logistics of timing and sending out the letter, but get the names over either Tom or myself.
Well, thank you, Mr. President, and thanks for your time this morning, it's great, always great being with you, and I look forward to it.
Yeah.
All right?
Thank you very much.
Okay, next order of business is our consent agenda, covering items five on personnel, as well as item six, a contract with North Central Ohio ESC. So with that, I will take a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved. Second?
Dr. Rufford, Ms. Larimer, and roll call, please. Uh, Dr. Rufford made the motion, and Ms. Larimer seconded.
Dr. Rufford?
Yes.
Ms. Larimer?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank?
Yes.
Mr. Bennington?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is board discussion. I have one item, since we, we are so well-practiced now at setting board meetings, want to talk about the need to change the October regular session. Ms. Larimer and I are both out of town that night, so it's one thing to have one board member missing, or, you know, even possible if two are missing, but, but the two officers missing, you know, is the one rare time I'd probably-
We did not plan this.
We did not plan this. Would like to ask to consider moving that meeting, to try and keep it at least in that same week and earlier in the week, and based off of Sue and I's travel plans, we'd both be available that, that Wednesday of that week, which is, when we get there, October, October 19th, 5:30. I understand there's a little bit of logistics with this room, but we'll work through that, we'll have it in this room. Everything looked the same, just push it back two days.
Works for me.
Okay.
Works for me, too.
And it works for me.
And it works for me, and I'll assume it'll work for-
And, and we'll just, we'll just say it works for Ray.
Yeah, Ray and I discussed-
You know, because he's not here.
Yeah, decisions are made by those in the room, so I don't know if we need to vote on that, or if we're just, we're good there. Okay?
We'll need to just get a notice after the, change the website, you know, after the media.
Yep, yep. All right, unless there's anything else, take a motion to adjourn.
So moved, okay.
And roll call, please.
Ms. Larimer?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank?
Yes.
Dr. Rufford?
Yes.
Mr. Bennington?
Yes, meeting adjourned, thank you.
Thank you. Way to go, Eric.